I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is June 23, 2021. I will note that all three commissioners are present today. And we will begin with our public statement, Red Bama Commissioner Giffens.
Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBP and MCCSC.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we do have an agenda item addition.
Move to amend the agenda to add item J, an emergency declaration regarding the storms last weekend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this will be to ratify what has already been signed. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. We now move into the next agenda item, which is our department updates. And we will begin with the health department. Ms. Paul, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
I'm, I am in my office now with, with you. And so I, I'm having to, to adjust and, and get used to where everything is now at my computer. So I'm going to start, as you mentioned, about your declaration, Futures Clinic, our family planning clinic is closed today. They will be closed most likely for exams the rest of this week while we are dealing with repairs after flooding. So thank you for getting on that very, very promptly. I will tell people to just watch our Facebook and social media, and we will be putting out updates as that status may change. We may be open for supply calls, but not exams, those kinds of things. And we'll let people know how we're shifting and adapting so that we can continue to serve our clients and meet their needs while we are getting these repairs done. So we can keep everybody safe and sound. In terms of COVID-19, we do remain in blue. Our numbers are pretty stable at this point, not seeing a big change one way or the other, but stable is better than increasing and, and getting worse. So I will take that. I think it will take some time before we really get to that solid blue. We have little to no community spread, which is 10 or under per hundred thousand. So it, it will take a little bit to get there, but we are working on it. So thank you, everybody, for your part in making that happen. Vaccination rates, we have hit that 54% fully vaccinated. So over 54% of our eligible population is fully vaccinated, and over 53% have at least a first dose. So we want to keep that growing. It is a slow and steady increase that we're seeing. We want to make that grow as much and as fast as we can. It is our answer to really this pandemic and the variants taking hold and, and spreading, especially for those who are unable to be vaccinated. There's still lots of opportunities for vaccine. So the IU Assembly Hall is still open, and it, it, you know, we are starting to see those mass sites come down. So that is still there. It's, you know, we don't have any kind of end date for that yet specifically, but those mass sites are starting to come down across the country and be more points of care. So take advantage of that large accessible site being there and get your vaccine today, or as soon as you can, can get in. They do take walk-ins. The fastest thing to do is to make an appointment on ourshot.in.gov. And then you're all set. When you get there, you just have to kind of sign in and then go through the stations, get that vaccine, and wait 15 minutes or so, and you're on your way. We do have what we're calling our Moderna Mondays. Again, you can go to our shot and make that appointment. It is at Miller Drive. That is our partnership with IU Health for Public Health Nursing and our immunizations. I know that they were busy on Monday, and we welcome you there as well. I will just make a note that Assembly Hall is the site that has Pfizer, so that is 12 and above. If you're, Moderna is 18 and over, as is Johnson &amp; Johnson. Now, today, through the 25th, the Indiana Department of Health has their mobile unit in Harrisburg at the Community Center, and they will be there each day from nine to six with both Johnson &amp; Johnson and Pfizer vaccine. So if you made an appointment at our shot, that's great. You can do that, or you can show up. So please, if you know somebody that needs vaccine, there are some easy ways today to get your vaccination, and we encourage you to keep them busy. Some of those mobile units, as they have went around the state, have not been super busy, and I would love for them to go back and say, man, Monroe County worked us to death, right? They made us work hard while we were there. So go in and get that vaccine. And we do continue to do homebound outreach and plan other outreach clinics. We will be at Mother Hubbard's cupboard, and I'll have more information on that as that gets closer. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you so much. A lot of information there, great information there. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Every week there are new things going on, and you're always working on new ways of getting people through this pandemic. So I just want to thank you very much, you and your staff.
Thanks. Commissioner Giffens?
Is there a kind of a specific place? I didn't catch it, in Harrisburg, where the mobile unit is?
Yes, it's at the Harrisburg Community Center.
Thank you.
Excellent. That is a great place for outreach. And yeah, we appreciate the hard work of your department, your staff, and the board, of course, for their continued hard work throughout this pandemic. And so that, just a quick question about the Delta variant. It's showing up in Indiana?
Absolutely, it is. Certainly, the Alpha, the B117, they just changed all the names. So now they're all swimming in my head. That is still the most common that we are seeing. But we have, I, and it's all surveillance, so it's not every specimen, but they've identified almost 100 cases of Delta, I believe, in Indiana. And it is certainly, we're seeing it more transmittable, more severe disease potential. So the vaccine is still good against it. So that is the answer to fewer of these mutations and new strains, and it's our way to avoid those taking hold.
Yeah, absolutely. So if you haven't been vaccinated, please, please, please do so as soon as possible. You have so many options between vaccination sites and vaccine types. So it would be great to get us at a much higher percentage of vaccinated folks in Monroe County. Excellent. Thank you so much for joining us today. And we will move on to the Emergency Management Director, Allison Moore.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I want to start by talking a little bit about what happened Friday into Sunday, and then let everyone know all of the information we have on how we're handling the recovery of our detrimental storm that we had. So Friday evening, it started out with some strong winds. We did, our dispatch did get activated by the National Weather Service, and so our tornado sirens were in fact activated. We did receive information via dispatch from a resident that funnel clouds had been spotted. Those were confirmed by a sheriff deputy, and so our, our tornado sirens were activated again because there was more than a 20-minute lapse. So just for the public to be aware of that, we did have several questions about why they were activated more than once, and that is why. I also want it noted that when there is a storm in an area, regardless of how small that area is within our county, all of our sirens are activated. So even if it's beautiful and sunny where you are, we encourage you to take cover because that can shift and, and go in any direction at any time. So we did receive questions about that. So just for you to be aware. I want to start with saying how, on behalf of our office, how sorry we are with those that have been affected by this storm. We have so far received 66 reports through our 211, which I will get into as of this morning. And we also want to send our sincere sympathy out to the family and friends of Colton Bowie, who lost his life in this storm. We were very busy Friday evening here in the Emergency Operations Center. It was opened around the 10 o'clock timeframe. We did have to open two shelters, and I'll get in just a bit with what our fire department sent me. Our Monroe Fire Protection Fire Department is on the call and, and is available if you have any questions. They were very busy. So my understanding that as a county in a very short amount of time, between about 10 and 1, now, mind you, their timeframe of, of, of calls and such was much longer than that. But in just that short amount of timeframe, there were about 8911 calls. The Monroe Fire Protection District was able to have 69 emergency responses during that timeframe, which is just, just phenomenal. 32 people, pieces of apparatus responded to those calls. So it's amazing that one department can step in and do that. They did collaborate with, of course, City Fire, City Police, the Sheriff's Department, and then it, it's just phenomenal how they all had to come together and step up and what that, the Monroe County Fire Protection District was able to do in such a short amount of time. Our office assisted with evacuating 103 patients from a nursing home to a sister nursing home in a, in a southern county. So we were super busy with that. When, one of the things that the fire department did was they had to evacuate 40, 40 people from a residential home, and so we opened a shelter up on the south side of town for those individuals. Getting into Saturday on the north side of the county, they, they had some flooding issues. Our Ellisville Fire Department had to evacuate 24 people. So then we opened a separate, a second shelter on the north side of the community. And those are, are now closed. Those individuals have all been able to find places to be, but we thank the Red Cross for their collaboration, as well as the school system for allowing those spots, and then the South Central Christian Church for allowing us to utilize their facilities. We also sent out numerous messages, weather messages throughout this storm. I know a lot of people were very bombarded with those. I know sometimes that can be a little irritating, especially through the night, but it is always better to be safe than sorry. So they were, they were definitely things that needed to be alerted throughout the evening. And we thank the National Weather Service for all their assistance in this storm as well. So now I'd like to get into where we are and what people can do if they have damage. That's the most important, I think, piece as to where we're at, at this point. We have now, first and foremost, if you are someone that has had damage, I encourage you to check with your insurance company first. Make sure, if you do in fact have insurance, check with them first and see if you have flood coverage. If you do, then I encourage you to stay involved with your insurance company and find the best ways for assistance that you need. If you are an individual that does not have insurance or that does not have flood coverage, the next things that I have to say are really important for you, and they are, we have a 211 system set up so you can call 211 and report your damage through a phone call. Again, that number is 211. Or if you'd like to go to the 211 website, at the top of the page on the right-hand side, it is titled Monroe County Storm and Flood Assessment. You can click on that, and it will take you through a form that will encourage you to go step by step on the damage that you have. That website is in211.org, and I will put that in the chat this morning. It is also on the breaking news section of our Monroe County website. We are, will then compile all of the data that we receive through that 211, and we will go, be going out and doing damage assessments for these addresses. Now, some residents have already had that damage assessment because we have to have an initial damage assessment just to, just to confirm that we in fact needed to declare that disaster and that we wanted to, of course, proceed with this process of submitting the paperwork to try to get federal assistance. So keep in mind, some people are like, hey, some people I know had a damage assessment, but I haven't. That was just the initial, and we were able to gather that information to start the process. So by going in and submitting information to 211, that will let us know exactly where all of our damage are throughout our community, and it allows us to know exactly where and every spot that needs to have that damage assessment done. So by doing your part, we can step up then and do ours. And so hopefully, this process will be smooth for you. I know it's a challenging time, but this is the best way for us to can, to collaborate all of the data and then know exactly where we need to go. And then we also have, the Red Cross has cleaning kits available. That information is also on our website, but you can call the Red Cross website. It's 1-800-RED-CROSS. So if you need any, any assistance in regards of receiving cleaning supplies or assistance with cleaning, you can call that number, and they can help gear you in the right direction and provide that for you as well. And then I would like to shift to our businesses. They also report on the 211 website. It's a little bit complicated, a little bit challenging because it's really geared towards individuals, but the business information is also collected there. So when it asks for the name of the individual, that's the name of the business. And we have sent this out to as many, all of our different distributions at our businesses, but there might be somebody that's listening today that's a business owner. So anyway, you do fill it out on the individual page, but you put your business name in that. And we are working on getting small business administrative, we have to meet a threshold, and once we meet that, that threshold, we, we will, we will hope then to put an impact statement together to receive small business administrative loans for our businesses. And we have to have 25 different businesses that have at least 40% of the assessed value damaged. So by inputting this information in, it will be compiling that business section separately, and then we will be able to see where we are with that, and we'll then submit a package together for, through SBA in hopes to get those small business loans. I also want it noted that our office is available for any questions through this that we have. My office number is 812-349-2546. We are an office of two, and we are extremely busy. So if we are not available at that given moment, please do leave us a message. Be patient. We will give you a call back. We are trying to stay up the best we can, and we will answer any questions that anyone does in fact have. I do believe that that is all the information I have at this time.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your hard work. Let's go to Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, it's just amazing what, how everyone pulled together and, and took care of each other and the way the fire department and emergency management and everyone else worked together. And I'm just very relieved that things weren't worse than they are.
Absolutely. We're very fortunate here with the relationships that we have. I, I can't, I can't fathom how many phone calls I think I had back and forth that Friday night between various fire chiefs and fire personnel and law enforcement. So, and dispatch. Dispatch, I can't give them enough credit for their service that evening. They were phenomenal. So. Thanks, Commissioner Jones. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Giffens?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you and Kate. I know you were up all night, Friday night, coordinating things and just being the, the central hub for things. Things would not have worked as well as it did without the two of you. That's for sure. I did want to ask, the assessments that you said you would go out and were willing to, you know, go out and do, is that for only the people that live in the unincorporated parts of the county or anywhere in the county?
Anywhere in the county. And anyone, anywhere in the county that has had any damage from the storm is encouraged to go to that 211, any amount, small or large, because we are encouraged to meet a dollar amount. So any, even if it's something that you think you can repair at home and you're not going to need assistance for, but you had damage, it can help your neighbor by submitting the damage that you have anywhere throughout the, the community and the, the county as a whole.
Yeah, that's such, such a great point. And yes, I want to thank our Emergency Management Department. You helped so many folks overnight, you know, just trying to evacuate a, a nursing home is just, you know, that's one huge task on its own, but you were spinning a lot of important plates at one time. And a huge thank you to Monroe County Fire Protection District Department. Great, fantastic work. They were, they, they had so many calls, I couldn't believe it. Our Sheriff's Department, city, fire and police, of course, everybody just did such a phenomenal job and worked so hard throughout the night. So just really want to thank everybody for, you know, working together so effectively and really, you know, getting us through this really tough time, this storm. So a huge thank you, of course, and we'll talk to our Highway Department next and thank them. We appreciate you. I hope you get some rest.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And speaking of Highway Department, good morning, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. How are you all? So I'll just, just do a brief follow-up on the storm. I know we had crews out from 10 o'clock until Sunday morning. I think the last call-ins were around quarter till 12 for some tree, more trees down. I know when I left at 5:30 on Saturday, they were well over 85 trees that they had cleared from the roadways. We had three gradals out the whole time. We had sign crews out. We had management out driving the roads. We had road closings, making a list of those. But in the end, the guys worked really, really hard of getting all the roads open that they could get open before they left and making sure that all the flooded roads were closed and signed appropriately. So I, yeah, I can't say enough about how hard the guys worked. They were tired. They were exhausted. Working out in that weather is hard. I can't even fathom what they went through. So, but they did a great job. Right now, we only have minimal roads closed. Dillman Road at the bridge on the east-west side of 37 is closed. Maple Grove Road North is still closed. Woodall Road, Woodland Road, and Moon Road. But that's, that's a far cry from where we were at on Sunday, what was closed. So. So yeah, and if anyone has any issues or hazards or something that is a result and within our right-of-way, they could call us at 812-825-5355, or 812-349-2555, or go to the county website, and you can report any type of hazard there.
Excellent. Thank you. And we'll go first to Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I, believe it or not, on Saturday morning, I had to get someplace at 5:30 in the morning. And I was really concerned about whether or not I would successfully get there. I could see places along the road where trees had been cleared or limbs had been pulled off, and I'm just so relieved that the highway crew got out and did all that they did so that I was able to get where I needed to go on five, at 5:30 in the morning. And I'm sure other people who had to be out and about that early were very relieved.
Great. And I, I know there was debris. A lot of the times, we will just get the road open. We were going to pave this week. However, that was halted just so the crews could go back out and do debris cleanup that we had left along our right-of-way to, to get it cleaned up. So yeah, thanks, Lee.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, and your, your crews also clear out the blocked culverts and all kinds of stuff. It's not just the roads that, that you're out there taking care of, and they're out there putting up like the road close signs when roads are flooded. Just phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah, I didn't even address the roads that are gravelled that were completely washed out or new culverts that we had just installed were completely washed out. We saw flooding, of course, in places we have not seen flooding. But you just can't keep up with that type of rainfall at all. So.
What, a bridge is, is closed and out, right?
Britt, Dillman Road Bridge is closed right now. Actually, we had, the crews had done some extra work to the asphalt because in the last floods, all the asphalt had washed away and ripped up. So they used a different method. And so we went out there on Saturday and looked at that bridge, and it had debris on it and had trees everywhere. So we closed the road. However, the asphalt was still intact, and that part looked great. Rogers Street was another road that the asphalt there had been washed away at that bridge. So we were just out there yesterday getting a quote on getting that open. It's a little bit of a rough spot right now. It's open, but we do have slow signs and hazard signs before and after that bridge, just so people will drive slow through there because what's developed is a pretty deep dip into that until we can get it repaired. But again, we were getting quotes on that yesterday so we can get that repaired as fast as possible.
Wow.
Yeah, amazing work. Please pass along our deepest appreciation to everyone on the staff, the crew. It is, as you note, difficult work under difficult circumstances, and they really just did such a phenomenal job to keep, keep the roads open, to get our emergency crews around safely as well. So we really appreciate their hard work, and please pass along our thanks.
I will definitely do that.
Thank you. Great. Let's see if there's any other department updates. For us, let me check here. I don't see any. Okay. So now we move on to public comments. This is for, time for items that are not on our agenda. There is, as with our agenda items, a three-minute time limit. There is going to be a timer on the screen, but at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. And at that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to finish your thoughts and ideas, and then you will be cut off at three minutes. So with that, let's see if there's anyone that wishes to offer public comment again for items not on our agenda. Ms. Purcell, Lois Purcell, Spinesville?
Good morning.
It looks like they are successfully unmuted, but there's no activation from the mic. So I believe Zoom has selected the wrong microphone on their end.
Okay. All right. Well, let's see if we can get her back on, and if we can, we'll hear from her whenever we can get her back. If maybe we can get a message to her or something, that would be great. Okay. Anyone else have any public comment for items not on our agenda? I don't see any. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, the approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes for June 16, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections?
No.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of minutes, June 16, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, June 23, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Stenfrenstein with us this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. The total for accounts payable was $106,135,423. $104,812,272.18 was for the spring settlement distribution. $343,320 was for Area 10 Rural Transit Operating Grant for the quarter ending 12/31/20. $244,917.16 was for Anthem Fees and Claims for June. $101,416.71 was for IU Health Bloomington for contractual healthcare for January through June. And then $88,200 was for Open Gov, Inc., for the workflow software in the planning, building, highway, and tech services departments.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just click on the raise hand button in Zoom and we will recognize you. I do not see any public comment on this item. So Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the approval of claims docket, accounts payable, June 23, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Stenfrenstein. Great to see you. All right. I will note for the record that we have received two reports. The first is from the clerk of the circuit court, May of 2021. And the second report we received is from the treasurer, and that is from May of 2021 as well. We will now move on to new business. Item A, please.
To approve resolutions 2021-28 and 2021-30, parks surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer. Good morning.
Good morning. The park board approved the surplus items on June 16th at 2021 at their meeting. And they're asking you to do the same for surplus resolution 2021-28, 2021-30. We had, we had some photos of the items. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just things did look like maybe they needed to move on.
Can I share the difference?
Move on, that's a great phrase. Yeah, and having met the park staff, I know that they work hard to maintain the equipment. So yeah, these have outlived their usefulness.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on resolutions 2021, 28, and 2021-30?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to item B.
Move to approve an MOU with Child Advocates, Inc. Fun name, JDAI Programming and Lit Special Purpose. Fun number, 9145 and 1,000 dot 30028 dot 00225, in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. McAfee joining us. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, everybody. I've seen a lot of you lately. This is kind of fun. What we're before you for today is to ask for another MOU with Child Advocates. You probably remember that the JDAI grant cycle is the fiscal cycle, so we get new funding July 1. So this is to spend part of our grant dollars to bring the Interrupting Racism for Children Workshop back. We are just, just yesterday, we concluded our third session for this past grant cycle. And this new session will allow us to have 40 additional court employees provided this opportunity. So thank you for your consideration.
Excellent. Thank you so much. What a great program. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I know that this has been extremely successful in the past, so I'm just very pleased that you're able to continue it.
Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I got to go through the program on a previous cycle, and I think it's just absolutely fabulous. So I'm glad you're doing this again. And I also am very grateful that it's offered to people in the community who work with children, whether they're class advocates or people like New Hope for Families. I know gone through some of the training. So I think that we're getting that intervention done very, very early, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, fabulous program. Thank you so much. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Memorandum of Understanding with Child Advocates, Inc.?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. McAfee.
Perfect. Thank you all.
All right. Item C, please.
Item C. Sorry, I'm in the wrong place. Move to approve resolution 2021-26, Notice of Election to Opt Out of Opioid Settlements.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Rice. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys? I want to remind you that in February of 2018, the county began participating in the opioid litigation. So the city of Bloomington and Monroe County joined the opioid litigation, and we have been represented by outside counsel, Conan Milad, since that time. We're very much interested in continuing to chart the course that we started in 2018. There was something new that happened this year. The Indiana General Assembly passed a statute sort of in the 11th hour and said that jurisdictions will be part of the state's settlement process with the opioid litigation unless we opt out of that legislation. So what I'm bringing to, to you today is a resolution to opt out so that we can continue to stay the course that we started in 2018. Now, you have a choice whether you want to pass this resolution and opt out and continue with our private counsel, or if you don't want to opt out. If you do not opt out, we will be part of the state settlement. Let me tell you that there is no settlement in place right now. We, we don't know what a settlement would look like at the state. We attorneys have talked, and we think it's in our best interest that we continue with the, to chart the course that we started in 2018 and continue to be represented by Conan Milad. So that's why I'm asking you today to adopt the notice and the resolution. The county council adopted it last night. I'm asking you to do it. And the state law requires us to certify that opt-out, to have the auditor certify it, and that we get it up to the attorney general before June 30. If you opt out today and decide within, I think it's about a 60-day time period, you want to opt back in, you can opt back in. So there is no harm today in opting out. If we, if we find some good reason to opt back in, you certainly have that window of opportunity to do that. But Jeff Cockrell is on this call, and he can join in if he has any comments to share. But I would appreciate if you would adopt the notice and the resolution today, and then we'll take care of getting that certified and get it up to Indianapolis. Please be aware that, you know, it sounds, when you sound like opting out, it sounds like we're, you know, we're not participating anymore in the opioid litigation. That is not at all the case. The opting out is opting out of what the state just recently adopted. And because we don't know what the state is going to do, because they, they weren't involved in the litigation in 2018, that's just recently been getting interested in this, we think it's in Monroe County's best interest to continue what we started in 2018. So any questions for me?
Let's see if there are. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Giffens?
This isn't a question. It's a comment. It was my understanding that Monroe County actually perhaps sued more entities than the state has. So in terms of the suit that was filed. And so that's another reason why we might want to stay the course.
Yes.
Did you have anything to add, Mr. Cockrell?
No, I, no, I think Margie covered it as well. I just emphasized that if, if you opt out, you can always opt back in, but you would lose the opportunity to opt out if you don't do it before the end of this month.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just when you, we, when you say always opt back in, there is a window. There will be a window of opportunity. It's, you know, that you could opt back in. It isn't an indefinite period of time you could opt back in. But it is a long enough period of time that I think, you know, we would be able to, and we'll certainly talk with outside counsel and keep you informed about whether we think it's in the county's best interest to opt back in during that window.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, thank you again, Ms. Rice. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on resolution 2021-26?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item D, please.
Move to approve to amend Monroe County Code, Chapter 755, use of and work within a county right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Ridge to tell us all about it.
So when we, I, we did a, an upgrade to our right-of-way section 755 last year. And the bond requirements in section 755-4, we want to exempt state and other specified government entities from having to post bond for certain projects. The city of Bloomington does the same thing for basically Monroe County. Do not require us to post a bond on some of our projects. You have a list that is provided within the document of all those government entities that would be exempt from posting a bond. And that would be Bloomington Transit, City of Bloomington Utilities, City of Bloomington, Indiana University, NDOT, Monroe County School Corporation, Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation, Rural Transit, and State of Indiana, Town of Ellisville, any utility or entity performing work on a device or pertinent owned or operated by or that direction of the county. So that, we would like to have them exempt from posting a bond with us.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This seems to be very sensible.
Commissioner Giffens?
I learned when I was reading through this that any mailbox within the county right-of-way has to be supported by a wooden post. I didn't know that before.
Yeah, that one's a hard one to, to enforce, I will say. We get a lot of reports, especially during the snow, that we've knocked over, you know, a $300 mailbox that was in metal and decorative and everything. But actually, it is against our code to have that within our county right-of-way. The big stone mailboxes actually can create quite a hazard for a car if they were hit that, so.
Yeah. Excellent. And I would assume the reason that the town of Steinsville is not on here is because we have a cooperative agreement with them? Or should they be added?
I can check with Mr. Baker on that. That's a good point. I'm not sure if we've ever received a request for work for a bond for the town of Steinsville, so I'm guessing that's why they have been omitted. It is something that we could also, at that time, make the request to exempt them if they come to us for a certain project.
Okay. That sounds like a good plan. All right. So let's see if there are any public comments on this item. Do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on amending Monroe County Code, Chapter 755?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right. Stick with us, and we have item E, please.
Move to approve Verizon GPS Agreement for Highway Department Fleet and Equipment. Fun name, Motor Vehicle Highway. Fun number, 1176, in the amount of $11,921.40 per year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about it, please.
So we have been looking into this for the past year. We've talked to different counties that have already implemented GPS into their vehicles and to their equipment. There's many benefits to doing this. It will help us to be able to know where our units are if someone calls in for a hazard. We can get there, get a vehicle there in a more timely manner. A lot of times, we get calls in the winter that our trucks have not been down to plow a certain road. We'll be able to look and see, yes, definitely, if it's been plowed and report when it was plowed, we'll be able to also maybe dispatch a person to that road that's needing plowed if somebody's needing to get out in a, in a more timely manner. Also, in 2019, we had one of our mowers stolen. When we are in a certain area, say way north of the county, and we still have mowing to do the next day, we will work with the property owner and leave our equipment on-site. We had, we did that, and we had a mower stolen, had a cost of about $112,000 cost. If we would have had a GPS unit on that, that mower, we could have tracked it down a lot more easily and stayed and saved a lot of headaches and, and insurance claims. So there, like I said, there's a lot of different benefits to this, and our benefit to this is getting more efficient in the department of being able to see where a person is, if somebody has a hazard, and dispatching that vehicle to that location as fast as possible.
Excellent. And we did talk about this at our work session last week. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This is something that I think will be very beneficial to both the citizens of our county and county government. And I suspect that our insurance company will be very happy to hear about this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I assume that this would have been even useful over this past weekend with all the flooding and directing people, you know, where they were, they were needed. But also, it struck me, the, the story you told last week too, about in a different county, somebody had suffered a heart attack, and they could tell the truck where the vehicle wasn't moving, and they got out there. And so I think, as Commissioner Jones said, it's a way to protect our own employees, too.
I, I agree. And a lot of times, you know, our dispatcher will try and get ahold of somebody on a cell phone or on the, the radio. If they're out cutting a tree, they're not in their truck listening to a radio. We're rural, so we have a lot of areas where we don't get good phone reception on a cell phone. So you might not be able to get ahold of them then. But you can be able to look, and if that truck stayed idle in a position too long, you can go and check and make sure that they're okay. If we have a report of a hazard, we can, we can look on there. If we can't get ahold of that driver, we can look and say, okay, you know, we've got T1 over here, and we can send them a little bit quicker. So many benefits, but yeah, you're right. Another county had done that. Their driver got out to work in the ditch and had a heart attack, and they realized he wasn't answering. So they were able to get to him and actually resuscitate him. So we do see a lot of benefits for the county.
Excellent. Thanks for bringing this to us. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve? Do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve the Verizon GPS Agreement for Highway Department Fleet Equipment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. And item F, please?
Move to approve DLZ Indiana LLC Supplemental Number 1 for Vernal Pike Connector Road. Fund name: Vernal Pike Connector Road, fund number: 8165, in the amount of $109,625.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So this is a supplemental to begin the right, for additional right-of-way services for the acquisition of properties for this project. The additional amount from the original agreement is actually $6,665. The supplemental was approved by the RDC Board on June 16, 2022. So if you have any questions, we are ready to move into right-of-way acquisitions if all the contracts are approved.
Okay, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right. All right, with that, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I don't see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the DLZ Indiana Supplemental Number 1 for Vernal Pike Connector Road?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. And next item, please.
Move to approve DLZ Indiana LLC Supplemental Number 2 for the Vernal Pike Connector Road. Fund name: Vernal Pike Connector Road, fund number: 8165, in the amount of $1033,300.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, tell us about this one.
And this is actually a supplemental to the original agreement. It's an additional $57,000. We actually had gone back through and changed some design quite a few times to try and save cost on the project. It's federally funded, $7,088,000 for this project for letting data fall of 2022. By redesigning and making these changes, it actually is going to save the project about $900,000 at this point. So we presented the contract to the RDC Board on June 16, and they also passed it unanimously.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm just always astounded at how much it costs to create new roads. And then there's also always the maintenance of them. Roads are very, very expensive things.
Commissioner Giffens?
I agree with Commissioner Jones, but I also think that we're putting in roads where we expect development to occur. And so we're actually supporting businesses and other things. But I also appreciate the fact that you really are trying to keep costs down. It speaks a lot to your hard work, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, great work finding the savings. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on DLZ Indiana Supplemental Number 2 for the Vernal Pike Connector Road?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, and we have one more highway item. Next item, please.
Move to approve awarding a bid to Regal Inc. for the Rogers Street Bridge, number 908. Fund name: Cumulative Bridge, fund number: 1135, in the amount of $737,37249.22.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Tell us about this one.
The project was advertised and bids were open at a public meeting on June 16 at 3:00 PM. There were four bids that were delivered. Regal Incorporated was the lowest, most responsive bidder. The engineer estimate for the project was $794,785.10. So we were thrilled that this came in underbid. It's planned to be completed between around August, September. We will be working with the City of Bloomington Public Works. I believe we're on the agenda for July. Since this is their road, but we own the bridge, so we work with them to get permission to close that road during that time. Construction is estimated at 30 days for completion, and this is also a community crossing award project. So we are actually, Monroe County will just be responsible for 50% of this cost.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right, that's really fast turnaround, so glad to see that. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on awarding the bid to Regal Inc. for Rogers Street Bridge, number 908?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you again, Ms. Ridge. Appreciate you. All right, item I, please.
Move to approve a request for a waiver of Monroe County Code Chapter 380, Noise Control, on January, July 23rd and 24th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Birdy to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. This was presented at the work session last week. However, Commissioner Giffens had some additional questions, and so I have Michael Grubb also available on this call. But for the sake of everyone's information, I'll just kind of recap what's going on. And that is, in March 4 of last year, you guys had reviewed a request by the Monroe County Fair Association and MAG4546 LLC, which is run by Michael Grubb, to allow for a barbecue and music festival at the Monroe County Fairgrounds. That is going to be July 24th and 25th. The request was approved, however, the event was not held due to the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. So since that time, the Fair Association and MAG4546 LLC have reobtained all of the approvals outside of the noise waiver from you guys in order to hold the event in 2021. And they are also awaiting a temporary event permit from the planning department. However, that permit is dependent upon the receipt of the noise waiver. So for clarification purposes, if approved for 2021, Fair Board Association and MAG4546 understand that currently there are no health restrictions in place outside those imposed by the Center for Disease Control. However, should the CDC, the state of Indiana, or the local Board of Health and Board of Commissioners, as a result of increased COVID-19 cases, or its variants, may impose sanctions between now and the end of the scheduled event. The Fair Association and MAG4546 are required and expected to meet all of those restrictions that are imposed. That is it. And as I said, if you have any questions, Mr. Grubb is here to answer them.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just am very impressed by all the planning that's gone into this event. I think they've really put a lot of thought into making it both a safe event and a whole lot of fun. So, yes, I do support this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was the one that had the question. So exactly how loud will those bands be?
We have, we have the ability to, I'm sorry, let me start this again.
There you go.
We have the, we have the ability to keep the sound down to an appropriate level. So we're probably going to be somewhere in the 90 dB range.
Okay. I had noticed on, you know, I'm reading through the stuff. I did try to go through it very thoroughly. What was the contribution of the Majero Inspection Services?
Majero Inspection Services has provided all of our, has provided our website, has provided our social media, and has continued to work with us in keeping everything up to date.
And then also, it said that the contract is to continue until terminated on, at least that's what it indicated on page 19 of the stuff from last week, sorry. I forget which page it's on this week. Is that still what you're intending?
Are you referring to the contract between MAG4546 and Monroe County Fair Association?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we wrote the contract such that it would stay active until either one of the parties decided to change, and then within a specified period of time would make written requests to be relieved from the contract.
Okay, so it's not anything, okay. And then if there are health measures put back into place, the requirements and stuff, who exactly would enforce the social distancing, especially at the vendor sites?
Well, I will have representatives from each of our organizations that are supporting with volunteers, and we will, we will provide oversight to each of the elements of the festival, and we will, we will police those actions between ourselves. And I've also hired a security pro, a significant number of personnel there to provide any other support should we need it.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And just to note for the public certification and to verify, there is a 11:00 PM end time on both Friday and Saturday for this event.
Correct.
Great, excellent. Very good. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the request for waiver Monroe County Code Chapter 380, Noise Control Ordinance, July 23, 24, 21?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Grubb, I'll get you the paperwork.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grubb. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we have one more item, item J, which was added at the beginning of our meeting.
Move to ratify an emergency declaration regarding the storm this past weekend.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I'm taking over because I think Allison had done a tremendous job at the beginning of the meeting describing the damages. So I'll kind of go through the code portion of it. Our county code reflects state code, and it allows the president, and it allows the president of the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and declare an emergency when it occurs. I believe it requires, if it's going to be extended beyond seven days for the full board to approve it. I think historically, we've always tried to get those emergency declarations onto the commissioner's agenda. Irregardless of whether it's going to be extended, there's no intent at this point to extend it beyond the seven days. So the basic function of declaring the emergency is for, to alert the state and the federal government that, hey, we had a big storm, and we have some problems, and we would like to get some funding if it's available. So that's the primary purpose to this. It doesn't involve the road closures or anything like that. That's more on a highway department level as to whether it's safe to drive on or not. So that's, that's essentially the, what is in the emergency declaration.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I know that we have to reach a certain threshold to qualify for any of these funds. Do you have any sense of whether or not we may come close to that?
I would defer that to Allison. I think she's more of the boots-on-the-ground of that. I think what she reported earlier is that they're really still working on gathering that kind of data.
And we have Ms. Petroline joining us.
Hi, I'm stepping in. We've got a lot of things going on right now. Well, good morning. In reference to the fiscal threshold, we have actually been in contact with the state, talking about what that number is, and we have not gotten a definite number. So right now, as Allison said before, please report everything that you have, because we really, really want to try our best to try and help out our community. So right now, we don't have a number that we can give right now, but please continue to report what you have.
Right, even, even if you have managed the repairs yourself, report it, because it's going to help others who have suffered a lot more damage. So, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Petroline. Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, I'm going to be filing my, my reports because we did have damage here for sure. But I also want to thank Commissioner Thomas for moving on this so fast. I mean, she just, I don't think you slept, so thank you all, so.
I didn't, actually. I got to bed at 6:00 in the morning, so I just couldn't believe all the calls that were going out. It was, it was amazing. And, but everybody did such a great job. I had the easy party, just listened to anything I can do, and that was it. So I actually didn't do a darn thing compared to what everyone else was doing. But excellent, thank you for that. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Petroline. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the ratification of the emergency declaration?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. And let's move on to our announcements. And we'll start with a proclamation.
Thank you. This is a proclamation for Pride Day. Whereas for centuries, members of the LGBTQ+ community have suffered hostility, fear, discrimination, and a loss of basic human rights. And on June 28, 1969, in New York City, police raided the Stonewall Inn, which sparked the Stonewall riots. And the Stonewall riots were a catalyst for the LGBTQ+ rights movement. Teens who identify as LGBTQ+ are more likely to experience homelessness than their heterosexual and cisgender peers. And youth who identify as LGBTQ+ are four times more likely than their peers to attempt suicide. And LGBTQ+ populations generally share the racial and ethnic characteristics of non-LGBTQ+ individuals. Researchers found that LGBTQ+ youth are more likely to experience stress and fear in school than their non-LGBTQ+ youth. And those who experience this stress are more likely to drop out of school and/or have higher levels of depression and anxiety than their peers. We applaud the U.S. Supreme Court's role in expanding protection of LGBTQ+ rights that include barring workplace discrimination and the legalization of same-sex marriage, and we support the repeal of the U.S. military's policy of "don't ask, don't tell." And as we say every week in our opening statement, "We affirm the right of every member of the LGBTQ+ community to live peacefully and without fear." Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim June 28, 2021, as Pride Day.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Commissioner Giffens, for that. And just to note that on Monday, the Monroe County Courthouse will be displaying the rainbow flag to show our support as the Board of Commissioners for Pride Day and for the LGBTQ+ community. In doing so, the Commissioners are expressing their support of this community and the right to live freely and authentically. And this does align as And this does align, as Commissioner Githens said, with our statement that we make at every commissioners' meeting. So thank you for all of that. So we do have a couple of announcements. And the first one is that on Saturday, June 26, there is an e-Waste Recycle Day at Cook. 500 Norris Profile Perkway, small appliances, computers, phones, TVs, printers, DVDs, and more. So a big thank you to Cook for organizing this event. It's so important for our community. So please, if you have some of these materials you have been holding off on recycling, please participate. Just a note for all of our residents, especially those who are are targeted for annexation by the City of Bloomington, we do have information on our website, co.moneroe.in.us. A reminder to our residents as well that if you feel like you didn't really know what was going on during the storm Friday night, Saturday, that you can sign up for Resident Alert and you will get messages to your phone or, and/or email. Just go to co.moneroe.in.us and click on the megaphone. This is the end of the Township Assistance Fund. It ends at the end of June. We appreciate all the hard work of the county council and of course, our township trustees for providing assistance to our residents. If you are in need of assistance with things like utilities or rent or other necessities, please contact your township trustee. Every resident lives in a township and your trustee is ready to help you with a number of resources, including the Township Assistance Fund. Also, a note that tonight at 5:30 PM via Zoom, we are going to be hearing from our consultants on the Comprehensive Criminal Justice Review Report. We'll be having a public conversation about the report as well. That report is available on our county website, co.moneroe.in.us. It's a very full homepage, but there's so much important stuff going, so many important things going on right now that it's worth having a little crowded homepage for the moment. So please join us tonight if you're interested in this really important topic that impacts everyone in Monroe County. And I also want to give a big shout out to our Technical Services Department for all of their hard work, week in and week out. Thank you for all of that. I know you're preparing for hybrid meetings for the time when the governor's health order lapses. So I know there's a lot of hard work going on every day. So thank you for all of that. Anything else from my colleagues?
No.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned. Ms. Jones, do you know what time you want to come back for the?
11:20 would be fine.
Perfect. We will come back for our work session at, is that all right? Oh, okay. I just saw the end of that and I wasn't sure. 11:20 for our work session. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well, get vaccinated.